Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this February 6 regular meeting of the Zion City Council to order. Welcome, everyone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Fryerson.
Here.
Commissioner McDowell.
Here.
Mayor McKinney.
Here. Next call of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Bremner, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Thank you, Mr. Bremner. Pastor Dave Adams from New Song Ministries is here to offer us prayer this evening. Great to see you, Pastor Dave.
I just want to say, I have always wanted to say this, and so I'm just going to say it now, about going, probably last fall, that summer, I was driving down the road and I seen someone picking up garbage on the side of the curb, and I'm looking at, who is that? And he looked up and it was the mayor, and he was like blocks away from his house out there. I just gotta say, man, that's my mayor right there. That was awesome. I loved it. Thank you. Yeah, let's pray. Father, we thank you so much. Lord, we do love this city. Lord, we'll scrub the gutters. Lord, I thank you so much for every individual that graces this city. You love them deeply. Father, I thank you for the blessings that you've given us, Lord, our city council and our mayor, one of these people that love this city and have given so much of their time and effort to bring order and blessing and prosperity, Lord. We just thank you, Lord, for their devotion. Father, they need wisdom as they lead so many people with so many different needs, Lord. And we pray for those that are needy, for those people that are hardly making it, Lord, for those that are in prosperity. Father, we pray, God, that we would reach out to each other, Lord. We pray for unity. We pray for community, Lord, that is committed to this city, Father. Lord, I pray for this group tonight as they lead us. Father, thank you for them, and may they have wisdom. Give them discernment, give them a deep understanding of the needs of our city. May their heart be for the people, Lord, as they serve them. Lord, we thank you so much for them. Bless this meeting tonight. We thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Dave. Item number four, do any of our commissioners have any agenda changes? If not, is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
No move.
Motion by Fryerson and second by McDowell. Item, oh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Fisher.
Aye.
Mr. Fryerson.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Aye.
Mayor McKinney.
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Item number five, we have citizens' comments, and I'd like to read something for, I see some new faces here in the audience tonight for our procedure for public comments. The opportunity to speak to the council is provided for members of the public who have a comment to make about the business of the city. The city council appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and your questions. The council strives to make the best decisions for the city, and public input is very helpful. The city must protect the civility and decorum of this meeting. It is unlawful for any person to disturb or interrupt a meeting of the city council. Please be respectful for the duties of the city council and the democratic process in your comments tonight. We ask you to please state your name and address and address your comments to the council. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Please be factual and courteous, and the council requests that you not make statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the council or staff. To the extent that multiple speakers are addressing a single issue, the chair reserves the right to limit the number of speakers making public comment of a repetitive nature and/or limit the amount of time for public comment. Last but not least, the city council does not respond to comments or attempt to answer questioning during the public comment period. In most cases, we'll answer those during our departmental commentary section. First up is Mary Lou Hildebrand.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. During the month of January, your Esda volunteers gave 120 hours of service for a value to the city of $3,816. We assisted the police department at four different locations during the month. We performed a monthly sirens test, held honor guard at the celebration of life of a former member, and held our monthly meeting. Members participated in training and did parking for the monthly food pantry at New Tech Parking Lot. We did maintenance and cleaning for maintaining the center and vehicles. If you are interested in being a positive force in our city, please consider Esda as a volunteer opportunity. Thank you for your continued support.
All right, thank you, Mary Lou, and again, thank you and the Esda crew for all that you do for our city and our first responders throughout the city. W.C.
Mayor McKinney, General Lee, honorable service. I stand before you this evening to call your attention to an article in today's Chicago Tribune Business Session. At the last meeting, it was pointed out that Sheridan Building will be closed for construction, and the D2 will be watch worth to something, in fact, to be its park and so on. In the meantime, the article says that the Waupkegan Medical Center, that is Vista, the trauma center, has been shut down, closed down. Waupkegan ambulances will be routed to either Libertyville or Lake Forest. I presume Chief Street may be aware of this already and taking appropriate action, but it is my opinion, because I didn't know about it, that the residents of Zion should be aware that Waupkegan won't be taking trauma vehicles anymore till they hit their X squared way. With your permission, sir, for permission.
All right, thank you. You helped me solve those. Permission granted. All right, thank you, Mr. Bremner.
Brian Cashmore, 1511 Hur. There's a, just one main thing, he covered the Vista thing, but the old Helia Nursing Home on 27th Street, I saw a post, I made a kind of weird rant about what's going on with that. You know, everybody has their opinions. I don't know if there's any things going on with that, whether it's going to get torn down or not, because I have friends and family that go to those shallow and central schools, and I know there's, you know, they board it, they board it up, you know, it gets broken into, people do god knows what in there right by the school, and sometimes a kid may hot head across their window and explore, and it could get hurt. I just don't know, like, what's, any update on that, because it's been abandoned for, if I'm not wrong, about 10 years.
Yes. Thank you for your comment, and if you stick around, we will address that in our departmental commentary, and there is something in the works that we've made aware, but you should hear it for yourself. So thank you for your concern. Wendy, good to see you.
Good to see you, too. So, good evening. Have you guys heard Buzz? On Saturday, a spreading seed of impact was revealed, a design by the public library, with over 100 people in attendance. Our community now has its very own free seed library for our communities. The seed library wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for the coming together of four organizations. That is, the Zion Benteck Public Library, the University of Illinois Extension Office, Illinois Dunes and Garden Club, and building up Zion. The University of Illinois Extension has, in the past, and continues to work at soliciting seed companies for their seeds from last year that they cannot sell, and this year we also supplemented it with Buzz and Illinois Dunes and Garden Club purchasing seed because the impact is huge. Last year, we could not keep that seed library stocked. It was constantly, those drawers were being emptied, and so we know that people were growing and feeding their families from it. So why do I call it a spreading seed of impact? Because that seed that we planted last year has germinated. As I said, we had a hard time filling those, keeping those drawers filled. So this year, we have purchased a brand-new, larger cabinet with the help from Buzz and Design Benteck Public Library. Illinois Dunes and Garden Club sanded it down, painted it, and then we had over 20 volunteers for three Wednesdays in a row give over $150 to repackage seed, relabel it, and then fill those drawers. We have now 243 individual compartments for seeds, and that cabinet where last year we only had 48. So we have really increased. How is this going to impact our community? It's going to give families food security. On Saturday, I met a father, and he came up to me and he asked, "How much are these seeds?" I said, "They're free." And he was like, "Well, what do I need to do?" And I was like, "Absolutely nothing, just go over there." And the look on his face said it all. He, I knew at that moment that he was going to be able to feed his family this summer, growing food for them because of that seed library. That's the impact we're making. We're also making an impact on the community by getting people outside, and as we all know, gardeners like to talk. Gardeners like to share, and so neighbors walking by, it's going to build that community. It's going to get them sharing. And it's also great exercise, being out in that garden, so we'll have a healthier community. Who is this seed library for? It's for you, it's for anybody in our community. You don't need a library card, although that is another great way to impact yourself by getting a seed, I mean, a library card. All you have to do is go over to the Zion Benteck Public Library, browse through the drawers, choose up to 10 packets of seed a day. It's free. If you would like to volunteer, we do meet at Design Benteck Public Library now on the third Wednesday of the month, from 1:00 to 3:00, where we repackage the seed, and if you would like to donate, we do accept donation of seeds, envelopes, and monetary, if you want to. So, so just, I just wanted to let you be aware of this new and spreading seed of impact.
Thank you. And I did get your invitation, but I was in Minneapolis, Minnesota, last weekend, and thanks for that. And now that we have Groundhog's Day saying that spring is coming early, knock on wood, those seeds will continue to germinate.
Yes.
All right, item number six, consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on January 16, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. Approval but not released proposed session minutes of a meeting held on January 16, 2024, at 7:29 p.m.
Is there a motion to approve the minute?
Make the motion.
A motion by Holmes, second, second by McDowell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Mayor McKinney.
Aye. Motion carries five to zip.
Bills vouchers 145137 through 145221 drawn on Hudson National Bank in a total $1,046,268.96.
Is there a motion to approve the bill?
All move to approve the bills.
Motion by Fisher.
Second.
Second by McDowell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Mayor McKinney.
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item number C, Proclamations for a Special Recognition of 211 Day. If you're not aware of the 211 service that's been in effect for several years with United Way, you can call that number for any kind of emergency, whether someone you know is having mental health issues, if you're having a need for rental assistance, they just offer a plethora of services to our community, they work with our township, and we are offering a proclamation which I will read. Whereas, United Way of Lake County has been dedicated to serving children and families in our communities for more than 100 years, and whereas the critical service, 211 Lake County, which was launched by the United Way of Lake County on September 24, 2019, is open and available for everyone in Zion and across Lake County, Illinois. And whereas 211 is a free confidential, easy-to-remember, one-stop helpline that connects people and needs to a wide range of essential health and human services, and reduces non-emergency calls to 911, and whereas 211 enables the people of Lake County to get connected to help 24 hours a day, every day of the year, by phone, text, and online, regardless of the language they speak or where they live, and whereas 211 expert navigators are trained specialists who will listen, identify underlying problems, and guide people to available resources. And whereas since launched, 211 has made more than 250,000 connections to help from every zip code in Lake County, including Zion. And whereas 211 team members have compassionately answered 669 calls and texts from Zion in the past year alone, with 1,148 needs requested and 1,471 referrals made, mostly for help with housing and shelter, utilities, food, employment, and income support and healthcare. And whereas 211 is available to 99% of America's population, and Lake County is leading the way as a model to bring 211 services to all Illinois communities so that every person in Illinois has access to quality information, resources, and assistance for addressing health and human services needs. And whereas the city of Zion is a key community partner committed to raising awareness of 211 to ensure this service can be used by residents and visitors for years to come, and whereas the daily 211 provides vital information and referrals to individuals and families in our community to improve and save lives, now therefore be it recognized that the Zion City Council hereby proclaims February 11, 2024, as 211 Day in Zion, and encourages everyone to become aware of the service provided by 211. They did it at Zion, Illinois on February 6, 2024, Mayor Billings McKinney. Is there a motion to approve this proclamation?
No move.
Motion by Fryerson.
Second.
Second by Holmes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Mayor McKinney.
Aye. Motion carries five to zip, and thank 211. I am on that board, and I know that we get, probably make more calls than any city in the county. And two.
You're in the top five.
Yeah, in the top five.
We are honored for the proclamation, we appreciate that. And just remember, the 211 is just a call, a click, or a text, 24/7, on your own.
Yes, and I know that our police officers, our first responders, we have this information available at City Hall, and we usually pass it out to our residents as we go throughout the city of Zion. So thank you and the 211 board.
Thank you.
And all of the providers that help us with the necessary resources and services.
Oh, Mayor? I have one other item under proclamations that I'd like to add. Wait for everybody to get their copy. I got them. Thank you.
Are there pictures on this one, so I don't have to read it?
All right. It's just a menu. All right. Oh, yeah. Everybody bear with me, this might take a minute.
Oh, my God.
A proclamation, said in Zion, Illinois, recognizing and honoring William M. Billy McKinney III. Whereas William Mervin McKinney III, known affectionately as Billy McKinney, was born on June 5, 1955, in Waupkegan, Illinois, and has been a lifelong resident of the Zion community, making significant contributions as a professional athlete, broadcaster, and public servant. And whereas Billy McKinney shared a close bond with his late mother, Elma, from whom he learned his work ethic. And whereas Billy McKinney, a proud product of Zion Benteck High School and Northwestern University, where he earned a degree in education, has distinguished himself as an exceptional athlete, being the Wildcats' all-time leading scorer for 35 years, and achieving notable success in the National Basketball Association as a skilled point guard for teams such as the Kansas City Kings, Utah Jazz, Denver Nuggets, San Diego Clippers, and Chicago Bulls. And whereas Billy McKinney, on December 27, 1978, as a member of the Kansas City Kings, scored 30 points without missing a field goal against the Boston Celtics. And whereas Billy McKinney, on January 11, 1983, as a member of the Denver Nuggets, made 15 assists against the Seattle Supersonics. And whereas, known for his remarkable quickness and competitive spirit, earning him the name "The crazed hummingbird," Billy McKinney has demonstrated exceptional leadership and dedication both on and off the basketball court, contributing significantly to the sports industry through his roles as Assistant Vice President of Basketball Operations for the Chicago Bulls, Director of Player Personnel for the Minnesota Timberwolves, Vice President of Basketball Operations for the Detroit Pistons, and Executive Vice President for the NBA Seattle Supersonics and WNBA Seattle Storm. And whereas Billy McKinney, while serving in the front office of the NBA's Milwaukee Bucks, scouted basketball protege, Giannis.
Giannis.
(laughing).
Giannis Antetokounmpo.
Going to go on to be the NBA's MVP. Whereas beyond his professional sports career, Billy McKinney has served as a beacon of community engagement and leadership in Zion, Illinois, taking that home as mayor in May of 2019, where he has continued to advocate for the well-being and progress of his hometown with unwavering commitment and vision. And whereas Billy McKinney is proud to serve with the Zion City Council Commissioners, Christopher Fisher, Mike McDowell, Richard Fryerson, and Jacqueline Holmes, as they each work daily to make their hometown a city where residents can respect a historic past and work for a dynamic future. And whereas Billy McKinney has returned to the day-to-day Northwestern basketball family, serving as the color analyst for the Wildcats' radio broadcasts. And whereas Billy McKinney is a polyglot cinephile, music connoisseur, and will be the first-ever Northwestern University athlete who has his number retired on March 2, 2024. And whereas Billy McKinney lives his life with the credos "They can conquer who believe they can," and life's most persistent and urgent question is, "What are you doing for others?" Whereas Billy McKinney's life and career have been characterized by perseverance, excellence, and a profound commitment to serving others, embodying the spirit of Zion and inspiring countless individuals to strive for greatness in all their endeavors. Now, therefore, I, breath, Christopher Fisher, Mayor Pro Town of the city of Zion, Illinois, on behalf of all citizens, do proclaim, do hereby proclaim, March 2, 2024, as Billy McKinney Day in the city of Zion, and urge all residents to recognize and celebrate the outstanding contributions of Billy McKinney to our community, our state, and the world of sports. In witness thereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Zion, Illinois, to be affixed this 6th day of February 2024, Christopher Fisher, Mayor Pro Town of the city of Zion, Illinois. Whew![1440.25][1440.25](laughter)
(inaudible) 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 And could you Photoshop the tears out of this? Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. This was an unexpected surprise, and I'm giving Dave, Dave will the city administrator the evil eye.
(laughing) 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 We share equally in fault.
Well, thank you. It's a, it's an incredible honor. I've always been very proud to represent the city in everything that I've done from the day that I moved here in 1962, my family moved here. My commitment has always been here, and I can recall during my pro-years, our media relations directors would always say, "We're going to list you from Waupkegan, Illinois." And I would always tell them that, "I'm not from Waupkegan, I'm from Zion." And that goes back to a story long ago, and we still face this stigma with the city of Zion, that good things don't happen in the city of Zion, and good people don't come out of the city of Zion. I've always been aware of that, and I credit my mother with establishing the foundation of my principles as a young man, and the people in this community, I've said it all along so many years, that have done so much to help me in my journey. And for me to be back in this position as the mayor and as a commissioner has been a true privilege, and I've got to say the most rewarding thing that I've done throughout the course of my lifetime. I thank all of our city employees and all the residents that have voted for me in the past, that you have shared the vision that we all have for the city of Zion, being a great place to live, a place where you can feel safe walking down the streets, that has entertainment, and got people that work within the city that actually care about the future of the city. So, thank you very much. I can, a couple of things I'd like to say about the proclamation, and William Mervin, it's actually Melvin.[1640.41][1640.41](laughter) And that was put on one of my basketball cards by the media relations director of the Utah Jazz. And I informed him that my middle name was Melvin, and I guess he thought Mervin the magician, so magic on the basketball court. Not. But again, this is quite an honor for me, and I thank all of you for your support of this proclamation. And now, on March 2, every year, you're going to have to wear those Billy McKinney bigheads.[1678.82][1678.82](laughter) But anyway.
Can we have March 2 off as a city holiday now?
(laughing) (inaudible) One proclamation at a time. (laughing) Don't get greedy, Dave.
(laughing)
As I say, this, I think his mom, Mabley, an old comedian, said, "This is for the needy, not the greedy."[1703.04][1703.04](laughter) Oh, we do need to vote on this. Oh, so I'll shut up.
Please call the roll.
(inaudible)
We have a motion and a second.
I made the motion, sir.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Commissioner Fryerson made the second, Commissioner Fisher made the motion.
Commissioner Holmes.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Mayor McKinney.
I have to abstain.[1734.25][1734.25](laughter)
Very correct. Very correct, yes.
Thank you. You guys are full of surprises. All right, let's move on to item number seven, please, and thank you for allowing me to ramble a little bit. Item number seven, consider passing ordinances as follows. Was I finished? Item 7A, authorizing and approving maintenance agreement with Fulton Siren Services in the city of Zion for Chief Street.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Although, so I address my memo typically to the mayor and council, but maybe moving forward, I should address it to The Crayz Hummingbird.[1784.41][1784.41](laughter) That's nice ring to it. At any rate, the city's contract for maintenance of our emergency outdoor siren notification system is up for renewal. I'm recommending approval of this contract with Fulton Fire and Fu- from Fulton Fire and Fulton Siren Services, easy for me to say, in the amount of one thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars and four cents. This is a budgeted as the item. Emergency notification line one oh two dash one seventy.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by McDowell?
Second.
Second by Holmes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number seven B, authorizing and approving the purchase of communication services for the City of Zion per Chief Street.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. The city's Blackboard Connect, the company actually is now officially a final site, is up for renewal. The current agreement for service ends March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, and the attached renewal is effective March twenty-sixth of this year. I am recommending approval of this renewal in the amount of thirteen thousand fifty-seven dollars. That's up, that's a typo in my memo, I apologize. It's not up that much. It's up about a thousand dollars. Per previous agreements, the city will pay the invoice and half of the amount, sixty-five hundred and change, will be reimbursed from the Joint Dispatch Board, the Jets Board. The other half is a budgeted figure from as the fund one oh two one seventy. Also, as mentioned at a number of previous city council meetings, we urge all residents of Zion to register with Blackboard Connect to receive these noteworthy messages from city staff. Easy instructions can be found on the homepage of the city's website, cityofzion.com, where I can be contacted via email or phone for assistance with registering or just checking your numbers and email addresses for accuracy. I would urge anybody to do that. It's pretty easy to look up. Thank you.
All right, is there a motion to approve the purchase of communication services?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by McDowell, second by Fryerson. Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Item seven C, authorizing and approving agreements with Third Millennium Associations, Inc. for billing services for the City of Zion per Director Conway.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. The contract you have is from Third Millennium Associates, and it will allow the accounts and finance department to outsource the printing and mailing of utility bills. Third Millennium is a company many local communities use to streamline their utility bill printing process. This company will provide all paper, mailing envelopes, and remittance envelopes for the amount presented on the service agreement. By utilizing Third Millennium, we will free up staff time as well as decrease the annual expense to print and mail bills. I recommend approval of the attached agreement.
Is there a motion to approve the agreements with Third Millennium Associates?
I'll make the motion to approve this agreement.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by Holmes. Any questions or comments?
No comments. Thank you for the good work. I'm sure staff is going to, I really appreciate it.
We all will, yes.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Item eight, discussion authorization approval. Eight A, consider proposal from Deegan and Associates for environmental engineering services for the closed Zion landfills per Director Roberts.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. Attached is proposal for environmental engineering services for the city's closed landfill. Services will include groundwater monitoring and reporting, landfill inspections and reporting that is required by the IEPA closed landfill. Staff request and recommend approval of the proposal for environmental services from Deegan and Associates from Libertyville, Illinois, in the amount of thirty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars. The proposed contract is for fiscal year twenty-five and will be a budgeted item within the waste.
Is there a motion to approve the agreement for environmental engineering services with Deegan and Associates?
So moved.
Motion by Holmes?
Second.
Second by Fisher. Any questions or comments?
I do, I have one for Director Roberts. So, this monitoring and reporting seems to be just kind of the thing that keeps on giving, yeah. Can you talk to us about what's the status with IEPA and why it keeps coming back around?
IEPA being IEPA. The requirements change throughout this period of time. Our permits do not hold us on the changes from previous years. We have to meet the new requirements also within that. So that's part of, there's a multitude of different reasons why this thing continues. Staffing and IEPA has changed during this period quite a bit also, which made it very challenging. Each time our consultant needs a staff change, our consultant has to re-explain everything up, re-monitor to the new IEPA staffing. They have in the past, as you know, had been able to reduce the amount of testing from annual to quarterly, I mean quarterly to annual. Their goal right now is to continue discussing and providing information to IEPA to totally get this reduced. Do I see this happening in the near future? Possibly. Our background monitoring checks are levels have been decreasing. However, we're not the only ones out there. City of Belvidere, they have a closed site from ninety-nine that was supposed to be closed in fifteen. In a fifteen-year period, they are now still trying to close it after a ten-year extension out of that. Our site is closed in ninety-five. Kind of comparable. We're still trying to like I said, I'm hoping there's an end in this near future. I'm reluctant to give you a period of time.
Fair enough.
Says you're hoping to it.
All right, any additional questions?
No, thank you, Director Roberts.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item number eight B, consider proposal from Christopher Burke Engineering for construction observation and engineering services for the twenty-twenty-four Bull Creek Culver replacement project per Director Roberts.
Ladies and gentlemen, Commissioners, attached is a proposal for construction observation services for the twenty-twenty-four Bull Creek Culver replacement project. The IDOT is funding this project, which includes installation of a temporary and replacement of the existing city water main. Services will include the observation of the progress and quality of the executed work. It acts as a liaison between the city and IDOT engineer for construction portion of the city's own water main. Staff request and recommend approving of the proposal for construction observation and engineering services from Christopher Burke Engineering in a cost of twenty-one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. This service is a budgeted item within the fiscal year twenty-four water project.
Is there a motion to approve the proposal from Christopher Burke Engineering?
Make the motion.
Motion by Holmes? Second. Second by McDowell. Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call.
I had a question.
Sorry.
In the proposal, when they say, "Propose temporary water main", how temporary is temporary?
He's going to steal my thunder for my
Okay.
They have to provide a temporary while they're doing the construction replacing that culvert. They're hoping that portion will only be a few months and then start putting that portion of a new water main on that. Now, that's just the one side.
All right, any additional questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Item number nine C, consider proposal from Christopher Burke Engineering for engineering services for the twenty-twenty-four street program per Director Roberts.
Last time. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. Attached will file a proposal from Christopher Burke Engineering Services for the twenty-twenty-four street program. This proposal will provide engineering design and preparation of bidding documents for the resupcusing and reconstruction of a base bid of Thirty-first Street from Lewis Avenue to Lebanon Avenue. Also, Lebanon Avenue from Thirty-first Street to Galilee Avenue, and an alternative bid to employ Thirty-first Street from Lebanon to Galilee Avenue. Staff request and recommend approving the proposal for the engineering services for Christopher Burke Engineering for a cost of twenty-four thousand five hundred and eighty dollars and to advertise for bid. Funding for those services are a budgeted item within the fiscal year twenty-four MFP.
Is there a motion to consider a proposal from Christopher Burke Engineering?
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Holmes?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fisher. Questions or comments? And this, when we're talking about twenty-twenty-four road projects, Director Roberts, we also have, if my memory serves me correctly, because I'm crazed, that Galilee is also being done this summer.
Not this year, next year.
Not this year, okay.
That's twenty-twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay.
And that's the FAU project that's tied with the federal.
Okay, all right. So work is being done, okay. We have motion and a second. Any other questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Item number nine, departmental commentary. Director Ianson?
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, congratulations on your honor tonight. And four months ago, waste management required us to change our waste pickup in the alley to the street. There were these issues. It was going okay. The only issue we've been having is people will not return their cans back after the day of service. We've been sending out friendly notices to remind people to bring their cans in. But that seems to have been a big thing to deal with.
All right. And you usually have twenty-four hours or forty-eight hours after your garbage or recycling is picked up to return them?
Actually, we have old reads that should be brought in for the day of service.
The day of service. All right, thank you. Director Roberts?
Thank you, sir. I don't know, everybody keeps trying to steal what I'm talking about. Mr. Brenner got up and talked about it. I'm almost running out of things to talk about.
They say great minds take a life.
I know. So, I did have another meeting, a briefing with IDOT last week, Friday, matter of fact, talking about this project. The shutdown is scheduled to start February twelfth. They're going to start putting barricades up. And that is from Oak Forest Drive in Wadsworth. The start of that construction is going to be the temporary water main for ours to continue our service to the people to the south. We have close to seven hundred customers on that one. That temporary will go into place. Hopefully, that section will only be a couple of months. And then they'll install a new main. However, the total project is looking to last eight to ten months. And they kind of smirked when they said ten months. You can read into that as much as you want to. Hopefully, things will stay on schedule on that. The detour again would be from Wadsworth going west to Lewis, then south to York House, and then back east, back onto Sherrit. It's a large detour, but that's due to many heavy truck traffic going through the housing areas within there or a beach road, beach road to town. Probably is not a good route to have a bunch of heavy trucks go. So that's why we chose York. The temporary water main and the new water main, I'd like to remind council that that is being funded by IDOT. That's an eight-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollar cost, material cost. But the city is not having to pay, which will be picked up by the state. So, unless people have any questions.
No questions. Thank you for that information. I've been getting calls already about the closures and tried to explain that.
They did put a notice out. I didn't know it hit the paper. But they have been putting notices out. They weren't real strong on the date until last week. It is definitely going to start closing on Monday to twelve.
Okay. All right.
I believe this, huh? Well, geez, that notice.
That won't bother our paths of Popeyes, though, will it?
Oh, no.
Okay. Keeping the priority straight. All right, thanks, Director Roberts. Chief Street?
Good evening, and Mayor Commissioners. So, just a brief recap of the email I sent yesterday and the media release we put out acknowledging the problems that Mr. Brenner actually brought up earlier on Vista Hospital. They have been, and they will continue to be our most common transport destination. It's kind of erroneous for anybody to report that they're closing their ER or their trauma center. They are still open for business. They'll have, provide good services for medical problems and minor trauma patients we can bring there. If an injury rises to the level of what's called a category two or a one, we do have to go to a different hospital, either Condel in Libertyville or Freighter South in Pleasant Prairie. But again, our staff and our tools that we have to take care of our patients are top-notch. And the impact on our potential patients really is minimal on this. This has been politicized pretty heavily now as well. And, I mean, for good reason. They do have some problems deeper than EMS that they need to take care of with IDPH. But as far as services that we provide, very minimal impact. So, we are certainly keeping a close eye on it. We work very closely with Vista Hospital and their staff and their EMS system that we operate under. And I'll certainly keep posted of any other changes. But again, services to our residents and our patients, the impact of that would be very minimal. So, we will keep on keeping on. And our services will continue with very little impact.
Thank you, Chief Street. And for all of you that aren't aware, yesterday, Chief Street, Chief Barton and I attended a press conference at the Lake County Health Department about this very issue. And of course, a lot of people are concerned with the trauma level changing because this kind of impacts, as they said, as where we're communities in northeast Lake County, which is Waukegan-Zion, North Chicago, Beach Park, Watsa Harbor. And so, we want to make sure that our residents do get the best care and treatment. There were some, a couple of horror stories that came out of the meeting yesterday. But again, we put out a press release. Some of us were just made of this, aware of this, like three days ago. So I applaud our city administrator, our fire and police chief, and our city attorney for getting the press release out so quickly. As we attended the event yesterday, we were noted as the only city that had prepared a press release about this information. So, thank you for your forward thinking and being progressive about the actions instead of reactionary. Thank you very much. Chief Barton?
Do I have a question in the honor?
Yeah. Yes.
Are you raising your hands? All right. I just have a question. Somebody popped up to me earlier about the trauma center. So, will they be able, if it's a major one, they need to go to a closer hospital, will they be going to like St. Catherine Row or King M?
Yes, and we already do. Yes, and we already do. We already transport to those hospitals in Kenosha, Pleasant Prairie. So it's, it's, it's been pretty much business as usual for us on that. Yep.
Thank you for the question, Mr. Cashmore. Chief Barton?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I just want to get ahead of some, some of the messaging and this is starting to make some county news. The, the dispatch consolidation effort that the Lake County Board has, has funded and put together is a $53 million facility in Libertyville. And we, myself, Chief Street and Administrator Nabel, met with our current PSAP, which is our, our dispatch center, to start working on the logistics of what that transfer of service is going to look like for us. As many of you know, we transferred away from our own dispatch center years ago to a PSAP, which is at burning right now. And through the, the funding measures that the county's taken and as well as statutory requirements, we're going to look to a new center. We're hopeful that we'll be able to join the Lake County Center. It's got to make sense for us, of course, dollars and cents and, and quality of, of service is paramount in, in our mind. So I wanted just to make, make it publicly known, we're doing our due diligence and doing the research that we need to do to make sure that this transition goes smoothly, that the, the services that the residents see isn't, isn't displaced or diminished in any way. Part of what we'll end up having to do is we'll move away from some of the services that the dispatch center currently hosts. And we've been, staff has looked into it. We've been really getting some projections, some ideas on how to manage certain things, certain other things that our dispatch center has typically held to include parking permissions on our, you know, for overnight parking, vacation watch, house watches. They have a lost pet manager, the system that we're looking at. Citizen reporting and, and business keyholder information is all hosted in one location. So just, just to ease the minds of, of our citizens in the event that they see something like that, that it's, it's kind of catching some, some media news and, and there's been some dissenting opinions about if this is a good idea or not. So, but we're, we're doing our due diligence and we're, we're looking at other options and other outlets for maintaining the quality and level of service that we currently have.
All right. Chief, with the last time the dispatch service was moved, if my memory serves me correctly, it was state mandated.
That's correct.
I think there was some confusion with our residents that we made that move, but it was state mandated. Could you explain that a little bit more?
That's correct. And when that law was passed, it required any municipality that served 25,000 citizens or fewer to combine services from another entity. There's just, that's called a PSAP. What's the acronym?
Public Safety Answering Point. Fancy way to say dispatch center to the National Health Council.
And through that process, we've narrowed down to eight PSAPs within the county. And because of this funding effort that the, that the Lake County Board has put forward, many of those PSAPs, if not all of those PSAPs are looking to converge into that center. It will save, for us, we believe it will save some money on, on our bottom line, which is, which is of course much needed and wanted. But we're looking for quality of service as well as, as a fair amount.
Yeah, because I, I know the initial concerns, I was a commissioner at that time, was when the dispatch calls, one of the things about having it locally was that we had local people involved that could say, if there was a 911, they could say, hey, this is behind all these. And now that, I know in calling dispatch and trying the service out, there's a lot of explanation about, we've had to direct people, residents have had to direct people to where they need to go. So as you said, is this nothing that we can control? There isn't anything that we can control, but trying to make sure that the quality of service is maintained, as you well know, and support that it's, it's crucial for our residents, so.
We would definitely voice that in our last few meetings.
Yeah. Your honor, that, that we trust and verify. All right. Is that it?
That's it.
All right. Thank you, Chief Barton. Director Conway?
Good evening again. First, I just want to say thank you for the flowers. I'm going to come home late for bourbon flowers. It's going to lead to an explanation meeting. I'll take the bullet on that. Thank you for the flowers. And two, I just wanted to let you know, we do have a new account technologist in the Accounts and Finance Department. Her name's Diana. She will be mainly in charge of the utility billing, so she's getting up to speed. So if you're in City Hall, stop by and say hi.
And Diana habla, habla muy bien español?
Uh, muy bien.
Yeah. She speaks Spanish very well and of course, for all of those, 38% of our population is Spanish speaking. So we continue to try to offer diverse employment opportunities that reflect our community, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
That's great.
Thank you, Director Conway.
And flowers are not here as pretty as you are.
Aw, thank you. I know.
Gracias.
Got extra room?
Administrator Nabel?
I was waiting to see if Mr. Brenner was going to continue down the line with the announcements, but you know. In our continued effort for always trying to improve community outreach, I know a lot of you have attended on that. We have community forums that we've been doing three or four times a year with all the taxing bodies coming out and getting feedback from the public. We've been, now would be a time where we'd probably be talking about scheduling another one. But we are in the process of actually trying to consolidate that down a little bit as we kind of find our footing on, under us on what we want these to be. We want it to be more impactful and provide more feedback and have a little more opportunity to explain things, how things are going on, kind of like state of the community over past year, but also provide opportunity for people who don't always attend council meetings to, to get feedback from the public, share ideas, things of that nature. So we're, we're in the process of restructuring that a little, little bit. So please be patient on, on that. We're still doing them. We're just trying to make them more beneficial and make sure people are, feel like, like they're heard during that process. Addition to that, beyond just community wide, years ago before the pandemic, I was holding what I call dollars and cents meetings in the community where once a month or once a quarter, I would, we would pick a topic and I would explain why we do what we do, have an opportunity to dig a little more in depth into whether it be dispatching or our water system or things like that at just kind of various places around the community. I am looking to bring those back in the spring. So hopefully I'll get more than the five or six faces that I see here. But we'll, we'll have them regardless. And some of that will be based on topics that we have interest in from these community forums, where we can dig a little more in depth on, on, again, the city decision-making process, what goes into why we do what we do. And have a chance for you to ask those questions more on one, one-on-one basis rather than a three-minute kind of public comment section. And so when the weather gets a little warmer and things start budding, pay attention. I'll, I'll make sure to mention it again when I get something more solidified on the dates.
All right. Thank you, Administrator Nabel.
I don't have anything except March 2nd, which is now Billy McKinney Day in Zion. I'm, I'm wondering, Mayor, if we should have like a carnival or a parade or maybe you could just think on that a little bit.
All of the above.
Yeah, and just, you know, share with us, what kind of celebration will we have on March 2nd?
Maybe a one-on-one challenge with up-and-coming basketball players.
Oh, okay. Yep, my 25-year-old self will do that. My 60-year, 8-year-old self will watch.
Congratulations again, Mayor.
Thank you.
Only other thing, oh, wanted to say thank you again to Chief Street. Also got a lot of questions over the weekend. And one of the first things I did this week was go to Chief Street because I knew he would put it all in context. And, you know, once you get that right information, it's not as alarming as what folks were thinking. So thank you again for that. Also, we have the Community Hub meeting tomorrow at the Zion Library. That is from 1:00 to 4:30. There'll be several organizations there. CAP will be providing fresh produce. City of Hope will also be there. University of Illinois Extension, Lake County Health Department. And NERCO will be distributing education on opioid overdose and Narcan use. So if you're available, stop by the Zion Bennett Public Plaza.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Holmes?
Mayor McKinnon, congratulations. And I just want to say the crazed hummingbird is right in line with March Madness.
That, that name was actually given to me by an Italian fan. And he sent me a picture of one of my Denver Nugget jerseys and a pair of my old Converse gym shoes that I had autographed many years ago. They're not like the shoes that they make today. I can tell you that. But nonetheless, thank you.
I think I, I talked enough. I, I do want, can we make sure to circle back on Mr. Cashmore's question about the Galilee building?
I, I was going to address that. And Mr. Cashmore, thank you for asking the question. Thank you for coming. We've been dealing with that issue for the last couple of years. We've actually worked with the Lake County Community Housing Development Commission to get the funds to demolish the building. The delay in it, which will be explained probably by our city attorney, Mr. James Veselli, was there, we couldn't find the owner of the property for the last 10 or 15 years. Our building department has searched all over every league possible to find the owner before we could tear this building down. We knew it's a eyesore, it's a public nuisance. And it's one of the things that as a building commissioner, when I was building commissioner, we were working on getting the funding to tear that down, much like we did the Munder Building over on 27th and Galilee. So that's in the works now and then I'll allow, I won't allow Mr. Veselli here.
Oh, thank you.
We'll, we'll fill you in on what the process is. We had to take, we had to have deed to the property before we could tear it down. So it's, it's taken a long time to do it, but we've had to follow all the proper steps and procedures so that we don't get ourselves in a, in a legal entanglement.
To give everybody a good laugh, there's been many ideas on how to demolish the building. There's been the wrecking ball, there's been the actual bulldozer. Somebody's doing one of those controlled burns, which is like, there's a lot of crazy ideas.
Yeah, and there's so much involved to it. As we looked at demolishing it, there are a lot of issues in that building because of the leak roof and I'm trying to think of what is that? The mold that is? Yeah, asbestos, which has to be dealt with in a specific way. So we're going to, when we, when it's demolished, we're always going, we're all going to be out there to see it. And we're going to let the experts do what they need to do to keep the people in the neighborhood safe as it's being demolished. Mr. Attorney, you may proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, City Council, Mr. Cashman, thank you for your question. It allows us to give the opportunity to explain what's going on in this case. So taking what, with the understanding that we are in litigation, so there's some things I can't really comment on. Taking one step back, the grant and the funding of the grant is contingent on us having title to the property. So while we would normally proceed through eminent domain, which is a condemnation action, where we would pay the fair market value, we found and with the wisdom of the council pursued an avenue of abandonment where we find and we ask a court to find that the owner has abandoned it after a failure to pay taxes, the fact that it's not in the best interest, that it stays in the owner's interests for the self, health, safety, welfare of the community, then they fail to pay their water bill and we have to provide notice. So let's focus on that notice part for right now. So we have sent certified letters, special process servers to both Pittsburgh and Texas to ensure that we've done this the right way. Judges don't like taking deeds from one owner and giving it to another owner, especially a governmental entity, which I'm sure you could understand. And so we were set, and I can only give the procedural history of this, but we were set to have a hearing and I was going to go to court for a prove-up on this matter at 9:00 AM today. And midday Thursday, one of my associates received a phone call from the owner who said that she had been receiving these notices from us from some extended period of time and didn't know what to do with them and has just been kind of discarding them, if you will. So that triggered an obligation for me to inform the court and advise the court of what we had heard. I immediately took the time and pressed upon the city council, the mayor, the commissioners, the building department director and the city administrator to ensure that we had the authorization to go forward and preliminarily try to work this out with the owner to divest her interest in the property. Pending a couple of things, I think we're there. I have had that rescheduled for February 20th at 9:15, at which time I would hope to come back and advise this body that we have an order for abandonment to allow for the demolition of the property. One bit of free legal advice, please do not use a wrecking ball or controlled burn or any other way to destroy the property. That may cause bigger issues. But no, we understand how important it is, but the mayor has impressed upon me and the city council agrees and obviously staff agrees that we have to do it the right way. And the right way sometimes takes time. Government and law are not two things that move fast, but we do understand your concerns and we are working to address them.
And last, I'll just close out with this. Being on the Commissioner on the Public Housing and Commission with the county, we had this money secured two years ago. And with that wrinkle of we had to have ownership of it for, before we could tear it down and they would give us the money, that's been the holdup. So now we're at the end of the cycle. There's light at the end of the tunnel and as they always say, I hope that light at the end of the tunnel is not a freight train. So, so we're working on it, but thank you for your concern. And I, as I close out my comments and move on to announcements, Director, excuse me, Administrator Nabel talked about our community forums, which have been well attended. We hope that when we announce these that you show up and bring friends. And what we want to do with these forums is to have our residents ask us the questions like you're asking, if, if you're not informed about it. We have the answers. We might not, we don't know everything, but I can tell you, the staff and these employees that I've been working with over the last eight years really work diligently to improve this community. We're very forward-thinking. We have a great vision for the city. That's in part of our comprehensive plan that we redid in 19, 2019, which we're in the process of looking at reshaping it right now to, to kind of catch up with the changes of things that have happened since the pandemic. And that includes businesses, that includes what downtown looks like. So we're always thinking ahead, not only for what's happening now, but for 10 years from now, 15 years from now, when some of us might not be here. So thank you. And, and get, we want to get more people involved. We need to hear your voice, as Administrator Nabel said, about what your concern's about to community. And what you'll find is that a lot of those issues, a lot of those concerns, they're being addressed by these professionals in the room already.
Afterwards, I can, if I could, just to get, you know, to just, uh,
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Tell those people that like to talk and, you know, and talk about the issues, talk about what's needed and.
We want to hear that.
I've been that way since I was 10 years old.
Okay. Well, thank you. All right. Item number 10 is announcements. February 21st and Mary Lou says not so fast.
February 21st is a Wednesday, 20th is a Tuesday.
I was just going to say that.
And March 5th, 7th.
Yeah, you took the words right out of my mouth. Mary Lou, we, we've got ESPN. Anyway, on February 21st, I was going to say that was a mistake. February 20th at 6:00 PM, we have a Zion Township Board Meeting here at Zion City Hall, followed by a 7:00 PM Zion City Council Meeting. The city council meetings are always on the first and third Tuesday of every month. And then on March 5th, our city hall, our city council meeting will be canceled due to early voting at City Hall. And we've had some complaints about that in the past. The county controls that, that we're a voting site. We have to give our residents an opportunity to vote. And so you won't, after February 20th, you won't see us until mid, mid-March. Item number 11 is closed session pursuant to 5ILCS 120/2. Open meetings for the discussion of filed pending in a probable or imminent litigation, sale or purchase of real estate, collective bargaining, legal counsel and personnel. You don't have to stay for a closed session. There is an idol that we will vote on once we come out of closed session. So is there a motion to go into closed session? So is there a motion to go into closed session? So moved by Fisher.
Second.
Second by Holmes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries, five zip. Thank all of you for coming this evening. Mr. Cashmore, if you want to talk. Administrator or?